I mean, at the end I trust, now let us return to Guam is called to order. Mr. Majority, Acting Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to adopt today's legislative session agenda dated August 27, 2015.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered. Can I ask if Senator Espaldon, if you can lead us in prayer, and then Senator Siniklas in the recitation of the Inefresi.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Heavenly Father, we come to you today and ask you, well, first of all, we thank you for a beautiful day outside. We thank you for the many blessings that you shower our island with, and we ask you for today in particular to guide us all in this body, to use our best judgment on behalf of the best interests of our island. We ask you always lead us in our thoughts, our actions, and our words, so we may always do your will. Father, we give you thanks. In Jesus' name we pray this. Amen.
Senator Siniklas in the recitation.
And Senator Munia Barnes, if you can lead us in the singing of the Guam Haim in Chamorro, and Senator McCready with the National Anthem.
Thank you very much, Senators. Can I ask the clerk to please state, will call?
Senator Tom Adah. Senator Tony Adah.
Good afternoon, President.
Senator Uggins. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Espaldon.
Here.
Senator McCready.
Here.
Senator Morrison.
Present.
Senator Munia Barnes.
May I get?
Senator Esposito. Senator Rodriguez.
Here.
Senator Torres. Senator Underwood.
Here.
Speaker Wanda.
May I get?
Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Assistant Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to approve the Legislative Journal dated August 18, 2015, subject to corrections.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are no messages from Imago Lahe in Guam.
Okay. And standing reports?
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that they also be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion, objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are no reports of select committees.
Okay, you may continue.
And so, Madam Speaker, on item 12, I move that bills introduced, Bills Number 163-33LS to 164-33LS, Resolution Numbers 164-33LS to 169-33LS, Resolution Numbers 170-33COR, and Resolution Number 171-33COR, and Certificate Numbers 68-33 to 70-33LS be given its first reading.
On that motion, hearing, no objections, so ordered. There are no motions. So you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to excuse members who are not present for today's session.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions and legislative certificates introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the legal counsel to make technical corrections and to add all senators as co-sponsors.
On that motion, no objection, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 139-33COR as amended by the author and substituted by the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Land, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement on the second reading.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there is nothing on the Legislative Concurrent and Consent Calendar, and I move to go to the second reading file.
Okay, so ordered. So we are in the second reading file. Mr. Assistant Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to resolve into the Committee of the Whole for the purposes of deliberating and addressing matters on Bill Number 139-33COR as amended by the author and substituted by the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Land, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement, and that I, as the Committee Chair, chair the Committee of the Whole and invite the following, and would like to invite the following panel guests to join in the Committee of the Whole. Mr. Mike Borja, the Department of Land Management Director, and the Counsel for the Department of Land Management, Ms. Finney.
On that motion, hearing, no objections, so ordered. So we would take a brief recess to be able to make this setup, and also then to have the invited guests brought into session. So we are in recess.
The Committee of the Whole is called to order on the matter of Bill Number 139-33COR. The copy of the bill that we'll be discussing, contrary to what was announced earlier, should read on the upper left, "Bill 139-33COR, as substituted by the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement, introduced by TC Adah." With us today is, to my right, Mr. Mike Borja, the Director of the Department of Land Management, and to his right, Ms. Christine Finney, Legal Counsel for the Department. With me, also assisting me up here, is my staff member, Mr. Joseph Borja. Just before we start, then, we'll go ahead and establish the ground rules that we will follow during the course of this discussion. One is, we will go section by section in sequential order to go through this bill and the attached rules and regulations. I will allow bookmarking if it appears that it will be prudent to bookmark it, otherwise once we gavel a particular section, we will move on to the next. All proposed amendments must be provided to the body in writing unless the Chair deems that a verbal amendment would be acceptable, such as in amendments that may require just the change of a single word, as opposed to amending an entire sentence. And then, the drafting of the amendment shall be the responsibility of the Senator making that amendment. So with that, let me just briefly then introduce Bill 139-33. So Bill 139-33 is an act that proposes to adopt the rules and regulations to govern the commercial leases and licenses for the commercial use of Chamorro Land Trust properties, and to add a new subsection G to Section 75, 107 of Chapter 75, Title 21 Guam Code Annotated. And that newly added subsection will basically authorize the subleasing of properties, and also the assignment of leases. Right now, as we go through the act itself, subleasing is prohibited. So with that, we're going to go ahead and, do you have any opening remarks you'd like to make? Okay. So we're going to go ahead, then, and we'll start with Section 1, Findings and Intent. And basically, reference is made to Section 75, 107F of Chapter 75, Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, authorizing the Chamorro Land Trust Commission to make rules and regulations pursuant to the administrative adjudication law to govern commercial leases and licenses for commercial use of Chamorro Land Trust properties.
Mr. Chair, point of information.
Yes.
In reviewing the original bill that was submitted, which is what we've been looking at, at least prior to this, I know because that bill was on Legislative Calendar in a past session, I just need to know, and I'm just looking at some of the notes that I have made out on that original introduction, this is now a substituted version. I guess the first question is, are there any changes to the commercial lease and license program in this substitution, into the Appendix A itself? Because I noticed that some of the sections that I had cited based upon the original bill submitted are different. So if there have been changes, I'm asking the good Chair if perhaps you might be able to let us know where it is, so that we can kind of, if anything, at the very least for me, to be able to go through that section that is no longer in this Appendix A that was in the original bill.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator. That's a good question. Yes, the Committee has introduced this substitute bill because there was extensive changes that were actually made, and it would have been very messy to have shown the strike-throughs and the underlines. So that's why this substitute bill was then introduced, and that's what we'll be discussing. You're very correct. In fact, the version of the rules and regs that was transmitted to the Legislature by the Governor's Office is quite different from what we have here today. And maybe instead of pointing out where in Section 1, where in Section 2, it'd probably be best to actually just go through section by section, and especially like on the rules and regs, they're really not, the sections are not that long, and we could actually read through it, and then have the members basically ask their questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, then, because one of the points, and we haven't gotten there yet, but I just want to make sure whether, to understand whether it's in here or not, one of the issues that at least raised some questions in my mind was the issue of eligibility points. And I'm just wondering whether this new version of the rules and regs include eligibility points, the same eligibility points that were discussed in the previously submitted rules and regulations. I don't see it, and of course, I just kind of sped, read through this whole thing right now, and so I haven't seen it. So I'm just wondering, is it in here, or is it not? If it's not, then I'll just strike it from my notes of items to discuss.
No, it is still in here, and the Senator is referring to Section 6.4.
6.4.
Under eligibility.
Okay.
If you take a look on page 5, on line 5, it talks about eligibility preference.
Thank you. We'll discuss that.
So that's still, yes, we will get to that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just for clarity's sake, so based on the substituted version that this body accepted, we will read Sections 1 through 5, right, including the severability, and then we'll do section by section on the appendix? Are we just going to, because that's, it submits the appendix, so we really should start on Section 6.0? Is that the way we're going to work it? Or will we have brief discussion by each, or whoever wants to speak, about the general bill, the bill in general, before we go into the sections?
I would propose that we go section by section on the bill, and then when we have finished with that, because then what Section 3 of the bill does is it makes the necessary amendment to the law. And then, when we have finished up through Section 5, which is the severability clause, then we'll go to Appendix A and go then section by section on the rules and regulations. And that's really where the meat of the discussion is going to be this afternoon.
Okay.
So I think we'll be able to get through Sections 1 through 5 on the bill itself, and then go into the rules and regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vice Speaker, did you have a question?
I don't want to be contrary, but I'm just a little concerned, in this first section where it reads that Chamorro Land Trust Commission, it's authorized to make rules and regulations pursuant to the administrative adjudication law to govern commercial leases and licenses for commercial use of Chamorro Land Trust properties. I'm a little concerned that, after your last comment to the Senator from To Muning, that the rules that are now before us did not have a AAA hearing before the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, and whether or not those are changes that we can make and still satisfy the administrative adjudication law.
Your point is very correct, Mr. Vice Speaker. The rules and regs that is before us, the Exhibit A that is, or Appendix A that is before us today, was not the rules and regs that underwent the AAA process. I guess if that causes great concern, we could then pull the Appendix A that is currently attached to the substitute bill, pull out the original one, and then just go through and make the many, many changes. So for example, some of the changes that have been made was, for example, on what is the annual rent on Chamorro Land Trust properties? The original bill proposed that the rent on properties to be leased out for commercial activities will be based on a minimum of 9% of the appraised value of the property. The new, the substitute rules and regs proposes that, proposes that the rent shall be based on the highest bid offered by an offerer pursuant to a solicitation for competitive sale proposals, as provided in Chapter 5. So basically, then, this set of rules and regs, in order to get the best and the highest use of that property and get the most revenue out of it, is to then make it available for a competitive solicitation, as opposed to simply saying, you know, it shall be a minimum of 9% of the annual appraised value.
And I appreciate that, and I probably agree that that would probably be a better provision, but the thing is, Mr. Chairman, is it didn't have a public hearing, and would the people that would have testified before the Commission on the rules have had something to say about that? And I'm just a little concerned that it did, some of the amendments that were made are as major as you have stated, and probably for the better, but still has not had the benefit of public hearing pursuant to the AAA.
So then, if I hear what you're saying, is that you're suggesting that we should substitute this version of Appendix A for the original Appendix A that underwent the AAA process, and then go through the process of amending, amending, amending?
No, I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that if it is the position of the Committee, that the submitted rules, or proposed submitted rules, could have and should have been stronger, that we should not approve what they sent us, and send back the Committee's suggested changes for public hearing, and hear what the public has to say about that, so that what we do has had the opportunity to have been heard and discussed besides the 16 of us.
Okay.
The Director's here, but I'm just trying to...
Senator Barnes, did you have something you wanted to say?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I was going to request for at least a break, a recess, just so that we can talk about the possibilities based on the concern that the good Vice Speaker had, because I do know that based on the public hearing that we had, there were questions that were brought up, and the questions that were brought up had very good merit, and it was duly noted by the Committee, and I know that based on just briefly reading this, because I do know that this has major changes from the one that was in the previous agenda that our body accepted last session, or two sessions ago, I'm hoping that we can at least clarify some of that based on the public hearings that we had here for this bill, so if we can just take a minute?
Well, if I recall from the hearing, yes, Mr. Vice Speaker.
And with all due respect to the Director and Legal Counsel, if memory serves me right, and I've been dealing with this for 40 years, the, the most important person to discuss these rules is the Chairman and the members of the Commission. At the hearing, I joined in the question about whether or not the Director should be the one signing the leases, because the power is vested in the Commission members. In fact, the law, I can find the section in the law, that the Governor's not supposed to mess with the Commission, and that was the reason why we didn't implement it in '75 when I was Legal Counsel, because of the fact that it took so much power away from the Executive and placed it in this Commission. And so, we really need to be talking to the Commission members on the changes that we're going to be making to the rules that they're going to be implementing, because they are the ones that are responsible. they are the ones that are responsible for this homeland. And with all due respect to the director, he is, he's a staffer to them, not in charge of them.
Let me just advise the body that we are running up against the clock on this. If we do not act on this by September 1st, the original submittal would lapse into approval. I certainly would not want to see that because they're... Yes, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we can refuse to accept them.
I understand.
We can reject them.
So let me finish my statement then. So basically, the options that we have is we could basically stop the discussion here, rise out of committee with a recommendation to disapprove the rules and regulations that were transmitted down here from the governor's office, and then send back basically the committee's suggestions as to where the concerns are and probably what kind of corrections should be made. That is one option. Okay.
Can I just read exactly what the law says, and then I think that might clarify it. On 5 GCA Government Operations, Chapter 9 Administrative Adjudication Law, "No rule shall be effective until after compliance with the provisions of this section and 90 days, 90 calendar days have elapsed from the date of filing with the Legislative Secretary." The Guam Legislature may approve, disapprove, or amend any rule within 90 calendar days from the date of filing with the Legislative Secretary, except that any pending rules shall be deemed disapproved upon adjournment sinai of the Guam Legislature.
Yeah, so basically, if we don't approve, if we take, if we do nothing by September 1st, then what was transmitted from the governor's office will lapse into approval. Or we can, I believe that we can, and I'll have to get advice from counsel, is basically work on the attached rules and regs, which is an amended version of the rules and regs that were transmitted down here, and then act on that. Maybe we should go ahead and just, let's recess briefly here and see how we want to proceed with this.[1000.69]